Twenty third. Select board meeting, this meeting is being recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the select board meeting for the town of Southwick. It's Monday, January twenty third, twenty twenty three. I'd like to begin with a pledge of allegiance. Everybody will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I mean, this is getting to be something that we're doing at every meeting and it's, it's, it's not a happy thing. We lost two individuals this past week. One was Lou Campenaria, longtime firefighter volunteer. And we also lost Irene Wolf, who was working in our accounting department, helping us out when we were shorthanded years ago. She's also the wife of former chief of police, Charles Wolf. So if we could please have a moment of silence for these two individuals. Thank you. All right. The next thing on the agenda is public comments. This isn't gives anybody opportunity who's not on the agenda that would like to make a statement to the select board. This is your opportunity to do so. I ask that anyone that's in the room to please stand, state your name and address. And we're going to do the room first and then we'll go to Zoom. Is there anyone in the room at this time that would like to make a statement under public comments? I see no hands. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make a statement under public comments? I don't see anybody, sir. Okay, then we are going to knock off a couple of quick things before we have our first appointment. I want to acknowledge payables warrant number two, three, one, eight, B dated one, nine, twenty three, and the amount of three hundred and one thousand, six hundred and ninety five dollars and twenty five cents. I'd like to acknowledge payroll warrant number two, three, one, seven, dated one, seventeen, twenty three, and the amount of three hundred and seventy three thousand, two hundred and ninety eight dollars and eighty one cents. I'm looking for a motion to accept the open session minutes dated one, nine, twenty three as amended.
Doug Mogul will make that motion as amended.
Need a second?
Seconded.
In a roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. We knocked those off. Well, we can't go to the first thing there because that's going to take a little bit longer. So I think that it's almost six oh five and the first thing we have is Michelle Hill, town clerk, treasure collector in the Board of Registers concerning local election voting process adopted by the state legislature. Then we're also going to be talking about different hours. Okay, and we have Michelle Hill here and we have Nancy Stone, who is a member of the Board of Registers for the town of Southwick.
Yes, and the Morris says we're unable to make it. So I did do a posting for us just in case all of us were here. So.
Okay. Excellent. You have the floor, Michelle.
You were originally given the minutes from the Board of Registers, but I have a few things here that I will just highlight everything. It's just for you to take home and read.
Okay.
For the minutes. No, this is more. Yeah, this is more. So. So just a few, few things. And pretty much everything I want to talk about was highlighted through that. So you can review it after if you wish. But on, July of twenty two, twenty twenty two, advice, election advisory twenty two oh one was adopted, which had a lot of changes to the primary and state elections to include the local elections. Unfortunately, at that time, the state was not focusing on the local elections. So we didn't know what was going on. So we've had since then have some questions answered for us, but just some highlights to the changes that affects the local elections. First thing is registration is no longer twenty days when it's a combined election or town meeting. It is ten days for one, ten days for the other. So now we'll have two registrations. Um, they were there on Saturdays for, for a state or primary. It is now going to be on Fridays for us because we have adopted the law that does not, we don't have to do Saturdays. So our registrations will make Friday. So that's a good thing, but we have to have two of them regardless.
Into what time on Fridays? Normal working hours?
Not normal working hours till five o'clock, though.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, um, okay. So then the other big thing, big component, um, is that the vote by mail will now be mandatory for local elections unless the select board chooses otherwise. That's number one. Number two, in-person voting is not required unless the select board opt in. I have since been to the Board of Registers to explain the situation and they have provided the vote, which we can get to their outcome in a minute. I just kind of want to pull out a few things here. So when you go to make your decision and we start talking, the one thing I do want to ask is that you just consider voters' rights because there's one thing that will happen if we ever, if a state or a state or a primary lands on a local election day, which is kind of rare, but it does happen across the state. We follow their rules, okay, which can confuse voters, obviously, if we have combined. That's one confusion. Number two confusion is why do you do for one and not to others? So there's, there's a lot of that's going on. So, so take that in consideration. We can make the local election, the participation, whether it's in person, a lesser amount of hours than anything you've seen for the primary or for the state election. That could be in the vote that's taken if you wanted to. The state did agree that they will pay for the poaches for the voter. Not for the town. So we get to use the envelopes that they provided us for the previous elections to mail the stuff out. So we don't have to purchase those. So we get to use that. At least that's from the state. We also get to put a prepaid envelope in there for the voter to return the ballot if we do the continue to do the vote by mail. And that will be paid by the state. So, but the only thing we continue to pay is the postage out.
It's not a mass mailing. No, it's upon request.
You knew I was going to ask that question.
I would answer that. So thank you very much. So this is not like the state election, primary election where you get those postcards or anything like that. We are not required by all, by any means on a local election to do such a thing. So they would actually have to get the vote by mail application, which I put out online or come in, whatever they want to. And then we would mail it out. So.
So it's similar to an absentee ballot. But they don't have to give a reason.
Correct.
So that's the only difference.
That's, that's it.
Tomato, tomato.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. So if you look at it that way, the only equation that we're adding into that is the in-person voting during a period of time for the early voting. So that's it.
Okay.
So if you just take what we're used, used to on a local election, that's kind of ultimately what we're adding.
Yeah.
But someone could pull an absent. Whatever you want to call it now, an absentee ballot in place of early voting, correct? It's just a matter of when it goes through the machine, really, right? Vote still counts a hundred percent. One for one. Just to be clear.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So of course, throughout this time, over the last many years of all these changes, why don't you get rid of absentee? Well, absentee is right. So they, they won't ever get rid of one. They'll always have the two just to continue to confuse voters. So one is you have to have a reason and one you don't have a reason. So. So when we met, I met with the Board of Registers and went through this process. At this time, the Board of Registers had opt to continue the vote by mail. And then they opt to have the in-person voting. So I'm here for your input.
I'm trying to read how the motion was made.
Yeah.
So one, not to opt out on early voting by mail.
It was very hard to write this. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. It's not a negative, but it's a positive.
Correct. This is like some of our votes. So I'll actually, before you read that, I'll go back to number one is vote by mail is mandatory unless Southwick opts out.
Okay.
Okay. The Board of Registers voted not to opt out early voting by mail. So that is to have voting by mail.
Okay.
Number two, in-person is not required unless Southwick opts in. Number two Board of Registers vote was to opt in for in-person voting with the minimum hours needed for the town clerk's office to open to handle walk-in voters, which we could talk about those hours. So.
And one of our thought processes was that we felt that it would end, all of this would end up being mandatory by twenty twenty four elections.
Probably.
Yes. And to be honest with you, we were kind of hoping maybe we'd get more people to vote at a time election. If we didn't narrow it down to X amount of hours on a particular Tuesday, that maybe they could get their asses out and.
What did we have? I, I know it was a low number for early voting, wasn't it?
Or you're going to ask about the primary.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I'm glad I wrote those numbers down. Okay. So for the primary, um, this is, I only wrote down the numbers for voting by mail. Sorry, did not do the in-person. Okay. Cause they're all so different. There's so, so many different things between the two. So for the primary, we had eight hundred and forty request ballots for, um, vote by mail.
Okay.
For the November election, vote by mail only requested one thousand, four hundred and seventy. This is just early voting, not absentee, not telling you what, what actually was returned. This is what we mailed out based on request.
Okay.
So.
So that, well, that's for a bigger election. You're not going to get that.
You don't know what the returns were on those?
I do. I just didn't write it down. I'm sorry.
It was a high.
It was. So I know it was like twelve hundred for the November election.
Fair enough.
So I just.
So you got eighty percent of them back. Right. It wasn't, wasn't a lot of.
Yeah.
No show. Cause we're going to be picking up the cost of mailing it out.
Correct.
On a request.
Correct.
But the state is paying the cost of sending it back.
Correct.
Okay. And then the additional hours could be something that are doing regular business hours.
We can set the hours to be during regular business hours. Correct.
We don't have to do a Saturday or a Sunday or.
Originally, I thought we did. I read more and more into it. The select board can choose to set those hours at the request I was, I would, you know, recommend. Yeah.
Yeah, I, and you knew why I'm mentioning it because our next topic is reducing our hours.
I didn't want the oxymoron going on here. I totally understand that. So I, I personally was, would based on the next topic as well, not do the weekend thing and do at least minimum Monday through Thursday. And we can do one evening. So we can kind of offset that not doing on the weekend thing.
Yeah.
Um, and not doing five days. So.
All right. So let's say we agree with the recommendation and we do it this year and we find out.
Every year. You have to re-vote on it every year. But to her point, don't be surprised if it becomes a mandatory with.
Yeah, it becomes mandatory is mandatory. I'm just wondering, you know, the extent.
Yes.
If, if, if we find out, look, we're just not getting the numbers, you know, and.
Um, we agree.
Yeah. That, that, you know, uh, local elections are local elections. What do we got? Seven thousand voters in Southwick?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. All right, discussion.
Mr. Mogul. I think you know, the, the voting, voting day is long, but I, and if you can pull a mail-in ballot slash absentee ballot, whatever you want to call it, to overcome people that can't get here between eight in the morning and eight at night, or I think seven, when you guys, seven AM to eight PM on a given Tuesday. I get it. There are people that can't do, that can't do it. So you give them an opportunity. They don't need a reason anymore to pull an absentee ballot, right? Is what you're saying?
Correct. Yes.
That seems to be a reasonable accommodation to make voting accessible. And you know, if, if you have, and those could be returned and then they get put through the machine the day of the election anyway. So.
And the in-person would be done during normal hours.
Correct. That's, I think that seems like a reasonable compromise.
And we, we said that we had up to a two-week span that could be done with a minimum of a week and we went with recommendation of a week prior.
And I think especially in one of the things that always interested me with the, with all the mail-in and early voting is that things do change in the period of time after early voting starts until the election. There's news, there's information, there's candidates' own words and deeds that could impact how you vote. And if you voted, you know, there's, there's ways to change it or whatever, but it's very inconvenient. Or not. It's very inconvenient. So I think having it a shorter window, but having the option available is probably the, the fairest compromise.
Jason?
I agree with him, Mr. Mogul.
Yeah, very good. Very good. You're learning. Especially when we got two other people behind you. Uh, all right. Uh, do you want to take action on it tonight or digest it next week? What's your, what's your pleasure?
Well, she's going to sound an alarm bell right now.
I saw that.
She wants it right away.
I'm requesting it if we could, because I'm putting in the calendar. I just want to add this on to be consistent, have everything together and start to get this information.
I need a motion.
I will. Don't even know what the motion is at this point. Can someone give me that motion? I know what I said, but it's hard to reduce it to one sentence. For clarity.
The select board would vote to opt in for vote by mail.
So moved, Doug Mogul.
Seconded with Jason Paul.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Boom. Next one.
Southwick Select Board would opt in for in-person voting with the hours of Monday through Thursday with hours set by the town clerk, because I might choose to do one late night.
So moved, Doug Mogul.
Seconded to Jason Paul.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Okay. And if we find out, we need to future years, you need to modify or tweak it. All right.
I, I appreciate this. Thank you.
All right. Do you want Nancy? Can we excuse her with your thing?
Yeah.
Nancy, thank you for coming out.
You need to let me back in. Yeah.
Yeah, because the police chief has a gun and he's right behind her. So she's going to move up. I was going to say you gotta, you gotta speak fast.
Um, okay.
I'll wait. I don't.
It isn't going to take that long. Go ahead, Michelle.
Okay.
You're, you're going to be talking about town clerk, treasure collector, office hours modification due to staff shortage.
Yeah. So I just wanted to get the discussion rolling and or maybe even some action is completely up to you guys. But, um, I, I think you've all been made aware of the situation that has now come forward on in the office. So it's very minimal. I've never been this minimal in my entire seventeen years of being here. Um, and it is what it is because people have left for other opportunities. Um, so with that said, um, there's a lot of work, especially this time of year. And I am looking to see if it's all possible is that we can reduce our available hours to the public just by one day. And my thought was on Friday. So we have all of Monday through Thursday doing what we need to, what we need to, because the pile is going to pile up on us. And on Friday, we're just not open to the public and we're able to catch up with all our daily stuff and then start off on Monday fresh. I just need to do this for a little while until I am back into motion.
Okay. Uh, we've had discussions about this. Uh, you know, people can do things online now. Um, that's reduced certain things. So I, I asked Michelle to come up with some sort of plan. I think it's a reasonable plan, you know, and, uh, so that would be my thought process. Smogul?
Man, I hate to cut services, but the, the situation we're in, I think we need to do it for at least a period of time, you know, no longer than like six months or so until we, and then revisit the the situation then.
And we are doing that, Mr. Jim, and there are postings and advertisements out there. And there's some other agencies that I became aware of at the MMA that were trying to see if we can help Michelle cover those service areas while we go through that recruitment process.
And I, I actually attended one of the seminars concerning that, you know, and some of the ideas that were floated. Uh, we'll certainly be sharing those.
And is Friday the slowest day by far for?
So I never make anything due on a Friday. The only thing I will have to attend to on a Friday from now until there's, uh, say six months, whatever. Um, it's just the last day to register to vote and I will be open to make sure I accommodate for that. But otherwise I never put any due dates on a Friday. So.
But do you keep a statistics of, you know, Monday, we had forty-two people on Tuesday and no?
No.
Okay.
Do not.
Maybe it's not a bad idea to start. And so you can just tick sheet or even just, I don't know how you would do it. I'm, I'm not trying to impose additional work, but just make it a scientific basis of which day you're doing it. I mean, I know the transfer station did that when they decided to close Thursdays. That was statistically their slowest day. So it was inconveniencing the fewest number of people. With all the options we have now of, you know, pay online and everything else, I'm sure. And, you know, with COVID and everything else, I'm sure a lot of this is all done. You know, the attendance at the window has been down probably anyway. But and Friday seems as good as any, but I should probably back it up with some numbers at some point. That's in the four days.
Maybe, maybe there's something that the munis system can provide us on, uh,
Absolutely.
the number of transactions that are done during the course of, of a day.
Jason?
Well, Michelle, answer my question about my concern was billing. You know, what happened? You know, if somebody's last day was on a Friday, but you said you don't do anything on a Friday.
I, I do not make due dates on Friday. Yeah.
Since you're writing down, can I ask you to do something?
Absolutely.
Cause I think this is going to, you're going to get positive recommendation out of this. Uh, can you prepare a press release? You know, and emphasize the fact that we have openings in the town of Southwick uh, for qualified people. And perhaps people should also be aware, there's, there's a lot of transactions they can do online. A lot of information they can access online. Uh, and, and let's get that out there as much as we possibly can. And maybe local news media will help us out too.
Just curiosity question. In the press release, I know I'm not part of this, but not mention that it's temporary for six months? Just to see how well it works. Cause what if you want to stay on that schedule?
Mr. Mogul.
I need a motion. I, I, I would like to stick it out as temporary. We'll review in six months. Maybe in six months we'll say, look, no one complained. This is great and we're going to continue it. But if there's a backlash and the, and the, the staff is better, you know, we're up to full strength and we're able to offer that service to, to the residents of the town of Southwick, then we should. So I would be in favor of keeping it at six months. And then in six months, we can review it.
Okay, we have a motion. Need a second?
I will second that motion.
Okay.
Six months.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
All right, Michelle, you got everything you wanted tonight. Down a thousand.
Does it start next after the press release? I would assume.
Yeah.
Okay. I actually officially wouldn't want to start until after the February one deadline. So it's a very nice, clean, clean cut. So.
Sounds good.
Okay. Be back at the end. Is it okay that I go and work a little bit and someone contact me to come back for the last one?
Sure. Yep.
Thank you.
All right. The next up was the
Good to see you.
The, uh, police chief. He left, left the room, so I'm taking the fire chief.
Good evening.
Good evening. And the purpose of tonight's meeting, we, we got, uh, ten to fifteen minutes. We're meeting with, uh, Police Chief Landas. We're meeting with Fire Chief Stavanderwitz. And this is just to highlight some of the, uh, fiscal twenty-four budget that they're going to be proposing. You don't have to go into a lot of detail.
Okay. Well, thank you for the time. We've had a couple of areas where right off the bat, kind of were obvious where we need to increase. And some of it had to do with additional staffing and some of the other things trying to catch up with them as well as some additional training would be the two biggest ones. Just going through operationally, there's a few extra requests that would cover some of the software that we're using. We've added a couple that allow us to do a few more things as far as inventory is concerned. So that helps in the long run. Um, these are services that we've been looking for and building on. Um, but like everything else, they're, they're anticipating some increases as well. On the EMS side, infusion pumps is something that the state had required several years ago. But the rumblings are that these are going to be required and mandated in the events again, and they, they were about a thousand dollars a piece. We would need two of those. We had with the accident from last February and we took on fortunately a used ambulance in two thousand and thirteen. Um, it came to us at a very good price from, uh, the retailer that's manufacturing our current ambulance, uh, especially vehicles. Um, but as an older truck, we didn't know an awful lot about it and it needed some work. So we saw a little bit of an increase in some of the maintenance on that truck. Um, none of it's super heavy duty. Um, but given the year of our vehicles and the new one coming in, we kind of didn't anticipate having those fees, but more importantly is anything you need for parts has become, become very expensive as well as the labor costs have also seen increases. And some of it's been some downtime as well, too. Um, so we're hoping that, uh, just a small adjustment of about fifteen to twenty percent would probably cover that. Most of the fleet is relatively new. Um, come this summertime, maybe as late as the fall, the new events will be here. So we will have two brand new events. So the maintenance class on those would be remarkably low. And then the oldest one on the fleet right now would be Andrew Warren, it's a two thousand and nine, and that's been preventative maintenance on has been very good, but it's also a truck that's, as it gets every year older, it's a part of the main parts and people can work on it. Overtime budget, unfortunately, uh, we had a couple of things happen for us. It kind of put a spotlight on it, but this year going forward, um, looking for about a twenty to thirty thousand dollars increase in overtime budget. Some of that has to do with the increase in staffing, training requirements, um, as far as fire academy is concerned as well as a young department that really needs to spend a little bit more time doing some other training. So that brings people out of the station when they could be on duty. Um, our training is different than a lot of other agencies in that it's not mandated. Um, once you get through the fire academy and certification, but we really want to start to build to give our younger department as many opportunities for experience through education as possible. So that's on the board. Overtime, I'm sorry, for medical supplies, it was easily a twenty percent increase this year. Um, a lot of it had to do with availability. Yeah, it's, it's remarkable. We are currently shopping other vendors and see if we can get those prices down. Um, but it has been staggering at what we've seen for, for increasing prices. Fortunately, availability has been there, but I think that's part of the price we pay is to have that product available.
It's a cooperative thing with other fire departments.
So a lot of departments fall, I mean, that's probably something we should pursue, honestly.
Yeah.
It's a little bit stronger buying. We are by definition a smaller agency. Our product is pretty much on time ordering. And one of the things that dealing with boundary who do a lot of our business with is they provide on time ordering. Because we have a lot of product that expires. So when you buy bulk, there's nothing worse than throwing away product you never used just because it expired. So figuring out sometimes what you need is, is part of the strategy and being a newer ALS service, we're just finally getting our numbers squared away on some of that. So we've gotten better as far as those are concerned. There's probably, if you were buying in bulk or buying certain product, you could probably get what you want, but I'll be very honest. It is a particular business. People like certain types of equipment made by certain manufacturers. The price points are pretty much the same, but the availability becomes an issue. And you have your favorites. Um, so that's part of what we deal with on a day-to-day basis is trying to figure out what's best for the service. Does everybody like it? And we've changed a couple of products just because of that to try to get something that is a little bit more user-friendly and more adaptive for, for what we have. Um, but there's no way around it. I mean, those prices aren't coming down either.
Yeah.
Salespeople have already said, I know it's, and these are just consumable products. They're not even made, a lot of them are man-made and it's not a raw product. It's a problem like a wound room for the ambulance is a big thing. We're not dealing with that with medical supplies. It's just the cost increase across the industry and it's been felt in healthcare all over the place. Um, about a twelve to fifteen percent increase for turnout gear. Um, we're in a good place right now. So next year, we probably won't see an awful lot of that. We're going to try to pursue some grants on that, but I'll get to that in a few minutes. Um, our biggest one for operations would be the addition of one more person um, to start to build daytime staff. Uh, we could comfortably do this currently with offsets from some of the appropriated money for EMS per diems. Uh, because you would have, one of those positions would be filled by full time. There's still some anticipated costs with that um, as well as a possible change in the twenty twenty-four calendar year rate for pretty of the empty and for paramedics. So we'd like to see, kind of stay, um, stay competitive and, but also lucrative and, you know, for the, for the employee, but also something to draw for us. So capital wise, um, two of the bigger things we're looking at right now, and this is kind of a work in progress, is a better control for overhead doors. So. So the doors that we have at the fire station are very heavy. Um, the doors are in great, in good shape, not great shape. Uh, but the openers have seen uh a lot of work and they're lifting very heavy doors. They've been in use for twenty years, some get more use than others, we've already had to replace two of them. Uh, but the other ones we'd like to replace as well, and there's two reasons, one because of the age and the fact that eventually it will need to be done. But there is a potential for a grant through nine one one and communicate, uh the nine one one communications from the state. To provide funding for these doors because we would be able to incorporate them into full control from our dispatch center. So that's a big thing, there's several ways it can do it, so if somebody rolls out and doors left open and the station's empty, right now the door stays open. So that's the energy cost in the winter time. And we wanna be able to secure the building, so dispatcher be able to say, oh, need to close that door, trade the key and it closes automatically. Um, if for some reason the nine one one grant doesn't work in, you can get the doors with timers on them. Which is a nice way to go, uh the problem is if there's anything obstructing that, then that's it, the door goes up and then it doesn't go back down, so. There's a consequence to both, but I've been working with Dave Sutton to try to come up with some ideas. The other is, um although our building was built for the future, um the bunk quarters are inadequate. So right now it's a single room where there's four beds set up with steelcase office partitions making. Separate rooms and it's a, it's a tight space. Um, and then there's also separate for uh women's bunk room as well too. And that's adequately sized, but again, it's it's still two bunks together, the. Trend now is have a separate independent bunk, so you would have a row of bunks if you would. And it would be um, male and female firefighters could, you know, use the bunk accordingly, it's a separate room. I've been working again with Dave on this one. Probably like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would cover all the renovations that have to have, and we're very fortunate, we have the footprint for it. So it would be something on the second floor utilizing some of the spaces already occupied by one of the bunks. Relocating our uh locker room, uh men's locker room to one other area. Still makes sense where it's located within the building. Um, and then part of that would be um. What they call a stationary learning, stationary learning is a software for firefighters, so in the middle of the night, instead of a. Tone screeching and having you jump out of your bed and your heart rate goes to a hundred and thirty. There's a bunch of science behind what that does to firefighters, it has a negative effect on the body, so they have a slow wake, so you have to speak with a light in the room. And it's a slow light, dimly, dim, start to bright and uh slow wake up on that. You can also add corridor lighting, you can add lighting and apparatus bay and so on and so forth. But because our quarters on the second floor, the thinking is by the time they get downstairs, everyone is acclimated. So the slow wake, so there's multiple systems out there, they range anywhere from thirty thousand dollars to three hundred thousand dollars, depending on which one you wanna buy. But there's also been some money appropriated from the initial nine one one grant for a station alerting, so we're still in the process of meeting with the uh. The director from uh. The regional dispatch center on Wednesday to kind of review some of these things to see where we are. Um, with grant funding for this year and with anticipated the next couple of years to try to cover some of the costs in that. She's aware of both of these and thinks that, you know, the uh, excuse me, the overhead door project and the station alerting and thinks that they'll be covered by the grant, so. I'll know, I'll know more next month.
Don't ask Minichog about the lights.
Oh, right, I heard they're famous now. Made it all the way to. Yeah, exactly, exactly. So those are the, you know, the 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 bigger things that we anticipate, uh there's a couple of areas that we could save in, as I said, uh the per diem EMS budget would come down. To offset some of the costs of a full time employee, traveling conference, um with the addition of Zoom and everybody needing to attend a lot of things online. Obviously, it's much more affordable. Um, radio maintenance, because we saw a substantial grant coming to us with the nine one one regional dispatch. And there's probably money again coming uh next year for that, so I think that we could eliminate probably half of that right now. We've also purchased new radios um with grants, so we're in pretty good shape. Um, so that would be both radio purchase, radio maintenance. Um, EMS PPE, which is almost a wash, but that right towards our our uh equipment for EMS, but. The the idea was that we didn't know what was gonna happen last year with all the uh COVID and preparations for, you know, interaction, what level of PP. So there was a big expense on that and certainly preparing for the future, but we have a surplus. To to put it mildly, so we should be okay there. And then minor equipment, only because we've seen increases across the board in anything that's made of metal, no matter what the metal is, it's increased the cost. So a lot of our product is brass still and mostly lightweight aluminum, heavy duty aluminum. And it's gotten very pricey and their disposable parts, you know, they're five to six years, seven years, ten years. And it just, it's no longer useful, so we always have that cycle where we're replacing those parts there. So in general, that's what we're looking at, I have two grants on the table right now, um want to continue with the safer grant. For staffing, um so we would put in for four, for some reason, we need to get appropriated for this one additional person. Uh, but if it was, you can supplant the person in there, the second part of it is the AFG grant, which is the firefighter's grants and we're looking at. Making a recommended, a purchase for the power load stretcher and the stretcher itself for the new ambulance and. That could be upwards of a forty thousand dollar grant and maybe even fifty thousand by the time this all gets there. But the nice part about this is the AFG this year around is allowing you to put the service agreements in there, so a striker. Pretty much exclusively sell this power load system, don't make enough money on the first purchase, they wanna have a service agreement, but I will be honest. It saves money in the long run, so we've been entering into three year service agreements with them, they'll cover the cost of that for up to five years. So we then move to a five year request, you're able to roll the existing one we have into that, so that will cover both the stretchers and both the evidence, so there's a plus there.
Yeah.
Other things I'm looking to also do, um was to revisit and look at our ambulance fees to make them a little bit more competitive as well as our. Permitting fees, so we're remarkably low in permitting fees, we're okay with the evidences, but there's definitely a a room to to move on. That's what I have.
You got it.
Questions, comments?
Well, this is just a preliminary.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Right?
Yeah.
We'll see you in March.
Okay.
Hopefully you're gonna have uh. Some good news about grants, but I appreciate the fact that you. You know. Talked about increases, but you also talked about ways of saving money too, so I think that's good.
I just had one question.
Sure.
Um. And it probably for the budget hearing will be a good time to answer it is. I noticed that in in our discussions and and the ambulance has been going out to ambulances.
Mm-hmm.
So simultaneous medicals, has there been thought given to keeping that? Ambulance that we now acquired as a backup piece.
Yes.
For when the new A whatever comes in.
Yeah.
So you'll have two. Really new ambulances and one not so new ambulance, but would be a great backup piece for that.
Part of that discussion is. Okay, I've got two great ambulances here, but in ten years, you're gonna have to replace both of them at the same time, so. Can we park one in the back and, you know, put some sunglasses on it and leave it there for a year or two? I think it's certainly part of that discussion about what to do, so the the newest ambulance will be almost like the third one out the door, but we certainly. If nothing else for maintenance and service and things like that, we need to keep it, it would be good to have, I have the space in the station, so I don't see any reason to get rid of it.
Yeah, good question, Todd.
Yep.
Jason?
None.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is uh Police Chief Landis. And I mean, and I wanna thank you for letting the fire department go first, you know, I mean, he's been doing this awhile.
That is unbelievable. Relationship you've developed with the fire department.
That's it. All right, so I sent, I don't know if you all got the email today regarding just the topics that I wanna talk about quickly, so. As you know, my biggest issue is staffing. Um. We're down four people at the moment. Uh, three long term, one will be returning in February for military leave. Um. We attempted to hire, uh we did, but um one, one female who's on maternity leave, as you know, hopefully she'll be back. She'll be ready to start the spring. Um, so I'm looking on top of her for two other officers. We've applied for a grant, which I I've informed you, we didn't get, we didn't qualify, the community didn't. Um, you know, I feel that our transition to Westfield Regional, um we can offset some of the costs with with some of the dispatcher salaries that are. Would be available. Um, but we're, we we've always been able to maintain our staff over the years. Just because times were different, the way people worked, the amount of time they were willing to work and wanted to work and. Um, you know, everything is really kind of turning around the other way where this work life balance is coming into play. Officer fitness is coming into play, uh my ability to send officers to training is becoming harder, because if you send some off to training, then you need some to fill the back. Bill and we weren't built to lose four people. You know, where we um, our, our extra services that we provide to the community, our boat patrols. Um, citizens, police academies, all the things that officers come off shift to do or work outside their shift to do. They're two, they're working doubles as it is, so the available time is is limited, our productive time outside of patrol work is limited. We've really worked on over the years to build our administrative staff, our school resource officer. Court administrative sergeant, things that we really truly need to run the department. But we have to build the, our, the sole component of the D D, which is our patrol unit, so um. I'm really looking at the rest of my budget to be as absolutely minimized as is is possible. Um, to 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 make this transition work, um. Our canine supplies, just because of the cost of of dog food and whatnots to maintain the the um. Program, we're looking at a minimal increase there. Um, computer equipment, just a cost associated with components, a ten percent increase there. Computer supplies, uh same thing, ten percent increase. And then I'm looking to talk and I know there's been some talk conversation. Um, with regards to some of our non-union personnel and maybe a um parity study regarding their pay rates. So we we retain quality people, which is obviously our goal. Um, so there's some small increases in that. And then uh our two biggest capital expenses is was just to maintain our our cruiser rotation, which would be two cars. Um. So in a nutshell, that's really my focus on is doing whatever we can to financially. Get our staff to where we can stay afloat.
Ballpark to get around to our.
Well.
Ballpark.
Ballpark, um, well. And I'm gonna give you three for three, the reason I say that is because our new officer isn't in the payroll yet.
Okay.
So a total benefits package, soup to nuts with. Uh, a bachelor's degree is two hundred and fifty nine thousand. A year, and that's, like I said, that's their insurance, that's if they come, some of them like, our new hire doesn't have a degree. But if they, just on average, we balanced it out, it would be, and that's clothing allowance, I mean, everything, I got a formula from accounting for that.
Yeah, no. No, and I appreciate you giving us soup to nuts, because a lot of times people throw out a figure. And then nobody's figuring about insurance, retirement, holiday, all that stuff.
Yeah.
So I appreciate your honesty.
Okay, Mr. Morgan, questions? So net, I mean, part of this. The the need for the additional officers versus the devastating loss of a lot of the reserve, right, I mean, that. That needs to be said, cause it's it it's really decimated small town. Police reform.
For the salaries that we once had for the reserve program, that'll go towards the full time, it's not a huge amount of money and. I just wanna be totally clear, this is not about saving money.
No, I I get it, I just, but it's, but and then. At the end, where are we net? In heads. So in 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 your budget proposal, I just wanna be clear for myself is we. You you mentioned you were down four right now, right, so. And depending on how everything shakes out, I don't, I don't wanna talk too much, but where, if you take the current staff. Where are you with patrol officers?
At the moment?
If you were at full strength and the and the budget comes through, how many, what would be the?
Twenty one officers that would bring our patrol staff up to, I'm thinking sixteen patrolmen.
And where are you now?
Right now, well, with our injured people, around ten, I mean, so with our, with our injured and everything.
So you would have fourteen, so it would be plus two.
Yeah, I'm just at the top of my head, yeah, for our patrol, you know, we would be a plus, we'd be a plus three.
Okay.
So we would be supplying of one person on each shift. And that's gonna hopefully offset, you know, all your vacations, your holidays, unfortunately, your injuries. And we are in a different time, you know, regardless, female and maternity leave, there's also one of our officers today is. I hope his wife is uh is 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 having her child tonight, so, but you got family leave act. And so our our patrol officer as well, these are things that we just didn't face before and. Again, we're not, for the numbers we have, perfect case scenario, nobody's out, we're running, we're fine. But it's never, it's never perfect anymore.
Yeah.
Um, Bobby, do you um, do you have to um? Besides buying, you know, the equipment and the armaments and all that, does this necessitate another vehicle?
I don't believe so, I'd have to talk to the detective, but I think in our rotation, the way we're running them now, um. We have a vehicle that usually, the way we rotate out, that sits, so it wouldn't require another car.
We'll have that backup ambulance.
There you go.
Jason?
I'm obviously very familiar with all the struggles Bobby's facing, and one of the things I've always said is. It's a cost, but I believe the manpower is something you need.
Okay. We thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving right along, hey, we're almost, we're doing pretty darn good too. Uh, we next, we have Andy Reardon, Park and Rec Grant for Rail Trail. Andy, line up.
Andy Reardon, twenty three Woodside Circle. And um. Working with Dave Sutton and just wanted to get your feedback as to whether we should proceed in this direction. Uh, over on uh Point Grove Road, there was a little bit of discussion. A few months back about putting an emergency access ramp in, and that sort of fell apart. Um, I became aware of this mass trail grant.
Yeah.
Opportunity, um where we could potentially engineer. Like access for the emergency equipment and for people at the same time. Uh, create a ramp, just wanna make sure that that's something, y'all good with the direction, what's your thoughts on that? Um, yeah, we own property to town, we own property there, that's already a parking lot.
Yeah.
Um, but there's no convenient access from that parking lot down to the trail because of the grade.
Okay.
Um, Andy, have you spoken to the Park and Recreation Commission, cause they have the the jurisdiction over the trail?
Mister Steinhardt, they sent him here.
Yes.
I saw them.
Oh, I thought it was Dave Sutton who sent him here, okay.
Well, everybody sent him here, but he did, I I caught the meeting, he did talk to Park and Rec and they said. To make sure that it's okay with the select board as well, but they fully supported his endeavor.
One of the main uh pieces of paper that needs to be processed for the grant is the land owner's permission to use the land, which. Ultimately comes a signature from here, I think.
Yeah.
Dave. I don't know where that comes from.
Be the chairman of the board.
I get to sign all that.
Perfect.
I don't know why I'm the landowner, but you know. But I get to sign those.
Right.
But uh, no, I I think it's great, I appreciate you stepping forward, uh is Mister Sutton gonna help you, I hope, okay?
Yeah, the original, the original. Concept of that road came, came through about thirty, almost forty percent of what needed to be done.
Yeah.
And then they had some issues they had to contend with, they they didn't have the financing, they couldn't generate it. And it kind of, just kind of sat on the back burner, waiting to see what they were gonna do. Uh, Mister Reardon approached and wanted to open it down this road, and I was like, well. It's a, it's an option, I said, I'll, I'll sponsor you or help you in any way I can to get this done. It'll take what we're planning on doing to the same level and then higher.
Yeah.
Uh, so, and there's, there's, the fundings are all there, just gotta apply for it to get it, the new changes in the eighty laws that made it easier.
Yeah.
In order to do these and make them a lot more friendlier to the environment as we go.
Um, that was gonna be my next question, ADA.
We're gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna walk with him and and be his sponsor for lack of a better term, that doesn't get through this.
Okay.
Keep my mission.
Uh, Carl. Should we have our ADA uh consultant be involved in this project?
Well, the the building inspector can um can weigh in preliminarily, and then if he thinks we need additional. Support in evaluating the ADA stuff, then we can retain the services of Jim Mays.
Okay, that's, that's who I was talking about. All right, do we have a timeline, Andy?
Well, this year's grant is February first, but it comes up every year.
Okay.
So if we don't do it this year, we'll do it next year, depends how quick we can get everything to line up and go.
Okay. Questions?
No, I, I don't know if you need a motion to support it, I gladly make the motion with our thanks to Andy and David for stepping up to to. Kind of run, run with it.
Okay.
And I will second that one.
Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Morgan, I.
Jason Peron, I.
Andy, thank you, David, thank you.
All right.
Hey. We are doing great tonight, and I'm looking, the first thing here is Pioneer Valley Planning Commission contract. Southwood Master Plan Phase Two, discussion with Town Planner. Done, gooder, gut, got her added. Got her. And Planning Board Member and Master Plan Committee Chairman Marcus Phelps. And we have both those gentlemen in front of us. And we have both those gentlemen in front of us, who's speaking first, Mister God?
Oh, sure, heck, I'll.
I just want to get on the record, this is not a planning board nor master plan meeting, we're home at eight o'clock, boys.
I I was gonna make a joke about scuttling your.
Just saying.
Your track for schedule so far. Uh, thanks for.
We we don't get along as well as the police and fire.
I observed, I I know where I fell in the uh, in the agenda, uh, but nonetheless, thanks for taking time to speak this evening. Um, here to chat with you on a couple of points, but the first of which uh, is the master plan. Uh, we are currently working through the remainder of the phase one contract uh, that we started last year. We've worked through, what, the community uh, survey with over nine hundred responses. Currently working through focus groups, uh, we also had several uh, fairly well attended uh, community engagement uh, meetings. Um, so happy to report that uh, now that we have the survey behind us, we are marching right along in sequence with our phase one. Uh, phase two essentially looks at. I'm also completing the effort, that phase one was, where the contract is broken up because we only had so much to work with uh, in the beginning. We had a number and uh, the town's uh consultant. And was able to divide up the scope accordingly, so in order to finish up, if you will, the master plan work. Uh, and and then advance it towards uh, prospective adoption. Uh, and then looking beyond that point at implementation phases, you know, how do we take the recommendations that will come out? Uh, this master plan, um, and look at both putting them into execution, uh, whether that be through um. Changes to the town's uh, bylaws or um, or or zoning maps or what have you. Uh, that being part of this now phase two. Uh, funding. We received a grant uh, last, well, it was earlier, but last uh, early in summer, I think it was awarded. Uh, to the town and the amount of fifty thousand dollars, which essentially covers this phase two work, that was through the E O B B A. Um, we do have, um, if you will, a uh, uh, capital item in our budget uh, right now to handle um. Well, that was to essentially make sure we had funds in place to keep things moving, and then we received that uh, grant, so. Happy to say we are um, at least thoroughly funded for this uh, phase two work. Um, and the best plan committee did review the contract and move to um, uh, support. Uh, this and bring it to the select board uh, in what, December fifteenth, on December fifteenth. Anything further, Mr. Phelps, want to add to that?
No, we've been uh, very fortunate to be receiving funds, I mean, we had the initial appropriation, town meeting. But then we've gotten some additional grants and uh, local technical assistance, we got a twenty thousand dollar. Amount there in the fall, so uh, I think we're well funded for the, we were, the whole plan now being finished up.
Yeah, I I believe Mister Chairman, the way the contract was written with them is that it it has different um. Steps in it that you have to issue different notices to proceed. And now what these gentlemen are indicating to us, both with the town meeting votes and other grant monies. Those funds are now in place to authorize the board to allow. Are going to phase two within the contract and the funds are there.
All right, thank you. Yeah, we were also able to use some community preservation under housing.
Right.
Uh, which is, which is a good thing, because we're always. Having a problem spending housing money.
Yeah, we tried to be creative and and where we could source some money.
I thought that was great.
And it's a, was a key part, it's a key part of the the governor's agenda, she mentioned it at the bay, you know, the housing situation in general in the Commonwealth. So to have this piece come in as part of the master plan and be funded with CPA funds offsets.
Right, we'll have some of our. Housing production plan, which is uh, kind of a separate item from the master plan, but it will be. Incorporated into the master plan too, because housing is gonna be an interesting topic when we get to that work group, I'm sure.
Yes, absolutely, and just like the, you know, like the open space plan that was, you know, it's gonna, this is standalone document, but it factors into. A lot of other things that we do in town, right? So this housing production plan will do that as well and function into the master plan.
Yeah, so in addition to this uh, first item here on the action folder, Mister Chairman. You've also talking about local technical assistance that Marcus just referenced. You get a later part where there's a twenty um, calendar of twenty twenty-three, where there's another vote where the um. The board could authorize the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission staff to. Um, to work with the planning board on other potential projects, and that's due. Next Monday, so that's why you would be um, approving that. Process and the chair to sign off on that, when John and Marcus and the others uh, work out what uh. Uh, particular project they want to use it for.
All right, Jason, any questions to come on right now?
Okay.
Doug, are you uh, ready to make a motion? Or do you want Carl to kind of spell out the motion? I know that it's authorizing the chair to sign this agreement in front of me, but.
So moved, that's, I mean, I've been at enough of the board meetings, I read the contract.
Yeah, that's fine, Russ.
Get to.
That's fine, okay, so we got a motion made, I need a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Do you have the original, Robin, to sign it?
Thought there was some stuff that had to get filled in it, uh, anyway, well, I think the date.
I have this.
Wasn't there a note in your thing that there was some dates or something or something else that needed to get completed? Or is it just the one at the top of the document?
I believe just the one top of the document, I know that the copy I have has not been executed yet by uh, the director of the D C. So I think this is the first ink being put.
And I might say the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, uh, Ken Camilla has been coming over, our primary contact, he's uh. Very dedicated fellow and uh, also they're sending other staff to some of these work group meetings. We've got one coming up Thursday, historical and cultural.
That's right.
So uh, they're helping out with the staffing there.
All right, we thank you very much, I know it's a long process and a lot of hours and, but it's greatly appreciated.
Our meetings usually run about what, an hour and fifteen minutes, Doug?
Great.
Yeah, the master plan, we have intermission.
Patrick's one of the members of the seventeen member.
No kidding. All right, next thing I got is uh, training pay change for Southwick Police Department Reserve Officers. Oh, Reserve Officer Training, Chief, go ahead.
So basically, uh, you know, the legislative change to fifteen dollars an hour for minimum wage. That would be the training rate of pay for our reserve officers when they're out, when they're through the training and uh. Firearms, CPR and other um, requirements made by uh, the state. So um, I just don't feel that fifteen hour to a rate is uh conducive to the responsibility. That it takes to maintain that type of training, proficiency to maintain that type of training. And that uh, a more rate consistent of say of twenty dollars an hour of what I'm recommended um, would um. Is more realistic uh, for the the level of effort it takes to 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 maintain um. What we're doing and because of the requirements put us by the state in the, and some of the new things that that are out there. Um, my current training budget, because of a reduction in reserves. Will maintain this, I'm not asking for any more money uh, to do this, I would just maintain that balance and um, I think that should be sufficient, so. Um, that's what I'm hoping that uh, you will accept.
Questions, comments?
No questions from me, sir.
Questions, comments?
Does this cover in service?
Yes.
Are they doing it separately or?
They, i- if they happen to be working a shift, certainly it's covered by the shift. But if it was something that they were doing in their own time, because we do have deadlines, we won't ask to be met, that that they would be getting it then.
That's what I'm doing, I'm going there, it's, it's been a bone of contention.
Sure.
So um, yeah, that makes total sense, so you, we've been doing the same thing where we've been allowed to. As Manning, Manning allows and time allows, there's a run shift, that would obviously be something like that. Keep doing here as well.
Right, right, we do it as much as we possibly can. It's mainly for a lot of the reserves who aren't part of the contract, where that's already in there. But they're coming out for a day's of firearm training, and if you've been to the firearms training, you know what it entails. So um, they would be uh, compensated, you know, for the uh, the 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 quality of of effort.
Okay, need a motion?
So moved, Doug Mogul.
Seconded.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
For humor.
Okay.
That was, got sent to my elderly brother at our business.
Okay.
I'm sure it's a a kind of a scam that you might want other people to know about.
All right.
Older, did it come from a police association?
Now, did Rich say that or?
No, he didn't, he's behaving himself as the new guy.
Uh, okay, next, I need a motion for the chair to sign a memorandum of understanding. With the Clerical Union for Employee End Date.
Doug Mogul, so moved.
I'll second it.
A roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Right, this is just, we're trying to, a person is leaving the employment in town of Southwick, and we're just kind of making sure. Everybody's happy when they leave and uh, this this straightens out things.
Like a day or two.
Right. All right, the next thing is.
Wow.
Okay, this is.
Mister Chairman, can, for this item, let's carry that to the end when Michelle, right before Michelle comes back, that way she has it to write down. And update the appointments. Just carry this to the end of the agenda, it's 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 purely perfunctory, but it's for the L E P C, right? That's the, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Carry that to the, if you don't mind, carry it to the end, that way she's here, she can write it down and put it right into the system, once those people get.
We're gonna move that out of.
Right here.
You got it.
Yep.
Right, we we also have the uh, L E P C Chairperson Lieutenant Banish is on the um. Is on the Zoom call, if you have any questions, the the membership of this committee.
Lieutenant, are you, you're gonna be able to stay for a while? I'm taking that as yes.
Yeah, that's a yes, sorry.
All right.
We're going now to.
Walk in right now?
Or are you sitting here at all the time? That's the second time I looked past somebody today, I apologize.
Still wanna, there, you wanna take it now? Okay, just, we're gonna go back. Okay, this is from us, Cindy Sullivan. Uh, was notified this week, two additions to the L E P C. Local Emergency Planning Committee that we have, you have already approved these people. Clayton Connor, representing Southwick Regional School District. Cecile Lewis, an alternate to Joshua Tauss.
You're good, continue.
From Bay State Health Services. So.
And Jessica Bishop.
And Jessica Bishop is the alternate for the fight upon, so there's three appointments for us.
And Jessica Bishop, okay. So we have three appointments to the L E P C. Uh, is the chairman of the L E P C, are you happy? Lieutenant?
Yeah, I have no issue with that, I believe these are just replacements for retirements and promotions.
Okay, all right, so, form of motion?
In the form of a motion for terms, they're all one-year terms, so these will expire at June thirtieth of this year. For, and then be up for appointment with the regular appointment cycle.
Okay.
So these are to fill vacancies, I believe, correct, Michelle?
Yeah. Well, that's, that's the motion.
I believe that's what the chairman said, or the uh, chairman of the L E P C is. You're second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
All right, thank you. All right, the next is to accept donations, uh, this is coming from the uh, Animal Control Officer. Um, and let's see, we have Southwick Civic Fund, one thousand fifty dollars. Helga Hayden, Westfield, Mass, fifty dollars. Sandra Dale of Southwick, twenty-five dollars. Interstate Building of Southwick, Mass, a total of two checks for two hundred forty-five dollars, fifty cents. Helen Carr, Pol- Pol- Poland, Maine, fifty dollars. Barbara B. Jensen, Southwick, Mass, twenty dollars. Cynthia Zarecek of Westfield, twenty-four dollars. I need a motion, and this is going to be going to the Southwick Animal Control Medical Gift Fund.
Doug Mogul, so moved with our thanks.
Jason Peron, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul.
Jason Peron, aye.
People love animals. All right, there's no doubt about that, all right. Uh. We need a motion to approve the contract and appointment uh, for Assistant C A O. Uh, that'd be Assistant to the Chief Administrative Officer, Nadine M. Signoli. Sig. No, I I blew it for the.
Signoli.
Signoli. Okay, until six thirty twenty-six.
Doug Mogul, so moved.
Jason Peron, second.
A roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
And I apologize for laughing, but we were practicing before the meeting, but make sure we were gonna say it correctly.
And I blew it again.
And we found it, we found a new way to mess it up.
It's, it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's Nadine.
Yes, right.
Uh, okay, uh, we need to approve a contract, approve a Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. D L T A request to finish Green Communities' application requirements. Carl, D L T A.
Yeah, it's it's just, it's the local technical assistance program, it's, it's the funds that the regional planning agency. Receives, and then they work with their member communities to program those funds and use their staff, so. As you know, we're going through the green energy application process, and we still have one of the five criteria. Is not yet complete with the um, energy uh, uh, building consumption inventory, so. Our contract uh, that paid for part of this is just about done in terms of the funds that we put aside. So they're gonna finish using um, finish the work using their funds under this agreement, and so. That's something that the chair has to be authorized to sign.
Okay, and I see that's a deadline of Monday, January thirtieth also.
Well, that one, that one you already signed, you were really ratifying it, the other one has got the January thirtieth uh. You know, that's a different pool of dollars.
Okay.
This is, this is out of older money.
All right, some of the, okay, some of the things in my folder are out of order, and I apologize.
Yeah.
For that, so that's the one we already.
Right, so this is something we need, uh, Dave Sutton, and uh, we also have Art Lawler helping him. As well as Eric Wickender in the new um, school assistant uh, Director of Finance is working with this group too.
Okay, so this would be under the existing monies that we already have under the technical assistance?
Yep.
We're just kind of allocating those dollars to this.
Well, we're not doing that, this is something, Kim Robinson, the the director is doing it.
Doug Mogul, somewhere.
Okay, just for clarification, district, local, technical assistant, correct?
Right.
All right, I have a motion, I need a second.
Seconded.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Okay. All right. Now we have. Approved P V P C twenty twenty-three D L T A project. For P V, P V P C Staff Assistance and Chair to sign off on.
Right, and this is the one that I referenced before, this is the new, this is the new allocation of dollars. And this is, this is the one that's due next week, so.
Okay.
I I have the planning board reviewing it to see which one they want to use it for. So the board needs to author, support the planning board and wa- and authorize the chair to sign off on this. It's not town money, it's P V P C internal money that they're awarded through their funding.
So we're gonna take a s- a s- a separate motion on this one?
It's on the floor. Yes, correct.
Okay.
Any for a second?
Is second?
A seconded.
Roll call.
Sure feels.
We're good, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye, Doug Mogul, aye.
Things happen fast around here, guys.
Right, the only reason why, Carl, also in here is uh, a a letter. Southwick County, Southwick Community Development Block Grant, Request for Proposals for Public Social Service Programs. Are we just, I, just announcing that?
You you can announce it, Russ, that's, that's something that um, Gabe and Eric is Johnson's uh, agency has put out. To solicit input for. to solicit input for a future public hearing for a community development block grant application.
Okay, so it wasn't on the agenda, but it was in the folder.
Yep, that's just more, that, that was uh, that was just under general mail.
Okay, all right. I think we're gonna be okay now. I think I'm in order.
We're gonna be good.
We're glad you're gonna be okay.
Thank you, okay, the next thing on the agenda, and it is in my folder. Uh, to approve the Labor Council uh, pay, mass pay equity law review and comparability assessment study. That's gonna be done by the Dupre uh, Law Offices and uh, I need a motion to authorize the chair to sign that agreement with them, that for, the amount would be ten thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, Doug Morgan will make that motion.
Jason Perron, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Morgan, I.
Yeah. Do you have the original over there, Robin, or should it, okay. And this is, this is something that we do.
Every three years.
Every three years and.
Right, but we're also, what we're adding to it this time is a comparability study of the different weight uh, classifications we have to make sure we're, we're examining um, the wages to make sure that we're competitive from a recruitment and retention point of view in light of some of the employees that have gone on to other municipalities for more dollars and better benefits.
And before I forget, uh, we had so many things going on at the beginning of the minute, I forgot to announce that uh, who was in attendance. Uh, I'm here Chairman Russell S. Fox, Vice Chairman Doug Morgan, Clerk Jason Perron, Chief Administrative Officer Carl J. Steinhardt is uh, remote, and Administrative Assistant Robin Solak is in the room. I apologize for not doing that earlier. Um, next thing is to approve invoice number nineteen, services rendered to administer the fiscal twenty Southwick Community Assistant Program in amount of three thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. This is from Pioneer Valley Planner.
That was in the chair now, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So moved.
Jason Perron, second.
A roll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Morgan, I.
Okay. We also have uh, invoice, approved invoice number four services rendered to administer fiscal twenty-one Southwick Community Assistant Program in amount of seven thousand six hundred forty-eight dollars and ten cents, again from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Both of these have to do with our community block grant program.
Doug Morgan will make that motion.
Jason Perron, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Morgan, I.
Jason Perron, I.
All right, next is a request uh, to go to the reserve, uh, for a reserve fund transfer request.
We gotta sign these, let's just take a break.
Okay.
While we're on it.
There's two. All right. A reserve fund transfer request, the amount of two thousand four hundred dollars for lake management buoys in mooring. Uh, the count is uh, they only have a eight dollar balance and they're looking for the twenty-four hundred dollar. And this is to replace damaged and destroyed buoys. We have the Harbor Master, uh, Chief of Police, uh, Landis, any comment?
I saw the request this morning, but I mean, it's just for damage sustained, you know, from boating traffic and uh, just wearing there, more or less, they do get quite a bit of uh, damage overseas and so, I would say that's a reasonable request.
Yeah, I need a motion.
Miss Herat is on the line as well.
Deb?
Yes.
What say you, as the lake management?
Um, we definitely need them. Um, we're also going to be uh, working on getting lights for them, so at night, perhaps there'll be less damage and people won't be aiming for them.
Or they will.
Hopefully not, hopefully not.
And, and you also know that, that the prices, like everything else, is up thirty-five percent, fifty percent. You know, it's just crazy, just absolutely crazy.
And what's great is Dick has explored this and he has found a place uh, that's more reasonable than what we had, the company we have been using, and the lights, and the uh, buoys themselves are more durable, they're a single piece.
All right, I need a motion.
Now I'll make the motion to send it over to the finance committee.
Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Morgan, I.
Jason.
Thank you, Deb.
All right. We're going to new business. Uh, discussion of green west road acceptance. Can I see our town planner here, are you familiar with this request?
Uh, yeah, I can't deny it, right?
No, you can't.
It's just, yes. I am familiar.
And, and Mister Chairman, I'll take a little bit of blame, I've been torturing Mister Björ and Mister Goddard to move this along because, and it just, timing is perfect, last week at MMA, or last weekend at MMA, I attended a session on private roads and what a pain in the neck they are. And oh, a lot of our problems with private ways in town of Southwick are and were subdivision roads that were never taken over the finish line and getting them accepted at town meeting. And so, wait, you know, by way of history, when I was on the planning board, we spent a lot of time unearthing old documents and stuff to get roads accepted, so they qualify for chapter ninety and that they're accepted ways and we can do maintenance on them. These subdivisions are new. They're almost done. The developer is eager to hand them over to the town in a timely fashion, so we're supporting that, and so whatever the process needs to go. I believe this was sent to town council for their review of the documents that they've already reviewed once. And then I think we send it to the planning board legislatively, or whatever the process is, for a hearing to put on a town meeting warrant.
Yeah, actually.
But they have to have a hearing first.
Right, the planning board will make a recommendation for its acceptance along with the uh, Public Works Director, they'll attend a selectmen meeting where the selectmen will lay out the road, invite uh, the abutters, we invite in the um, the developer who's petitioning us. And then there's a series of actions taken at this hearing, including the adoption of the layout as well as a town meeting vote to bring it to town meeting. And that package has been sent to um, Public Works Planning Board and Attorney Begley to prepare the necessary steps and process. Cause it's been a number of years since we've actually done a layout and acceptance hearing.
Yep.
And so I needed to double check to see if the process had changed over that period.
Very nice.
All right. So Carl, just for clarification. What type of motion do you want from us?
You don't have to take any action, this is just to inform the board as road commissioners that our office has received a petition for the acceptance process and we have sent it off to the town attorney to prepare it, so um, when those materials come back, we'll be setting up and scheduling a hearing for all the parties to come before you as road commissioners, for you to um, do the necessary steps under the law.
Okay.
And Mister Chairman, I request that we carry that as old business, so that we can track this and get this to the maytown.
You wanna put it down under old business, Robin, please? Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have any uh, new business?
Um, well, I just wanted to let you know, I, you know, I'm gonna be meeting with uh, the Verizon Governmental Affairs Representatives coming in to see me this week about different products and services they feel uh, could be sold to municipalities. And then the other thing I wanted to also um, share with everybody was our attendance at the Mass Municipal Conference in Boston. It, you know, with the last couple of years, uh, it was done remotely, it, it really left a lot to be desired, so it was really good to attend it in person with our um, town government management team. And uh, we split all the duties and everybody attended different um, um, subject matter seminars, and we've got credit for some of them through our insurance company. And uh, we also found some information that we brought back from the different vendors. And we're still in the process of um, unpacking all that information to see what we each got, as well as a year's worth of pens.
Anyone who puts in a P O rec in town hall for pens is in big trouble, it would bring back a fun.
So, those were, those were my uh, you know, one of the big things that you talked about earlier, the whole process of recruiting people and the different techniques. Um, you know, we, we, there are some things we can do going forward that I'll be talking to Nadine about. Uh, just trying to um, to see what else, I mean, I, you know, we established a rapport with the um, I think Joe and I at one of the seminars ran into a gentleman who runs the NPA program at Westfield State, and you know, they have other students that are coming out of their uh, their program, and we just wanna let them know that, hey, you know, start speaking to us and other municipalities about what your um, new graduates that are coming out that might be able to find a career in government for a few years in our organization before they go forward with other opportunities. So, there's, there's a lot to be uh, learned there, and we, we're gonna have to really um, look at how we used to recruit people versus how people are starting to do it now.
And I thought it was interesting, Carl, I mean, one is, we do get insurance credits when we take some of these classes uh, at the MMA, it reduces our premium, so um, that's beneficial to the town, but I also thought it was interesting that between yours, all, all three of us, plus yourself, plus the finance uh, team that was there. We all took the classes within kind of our own little specialties, if you will, or stuff that we've been working on. Uh, Mister Perron went to one on, on electrical consolidation and, and bundling. I took in one on private ways, but also on um, some changes at the CCC, which coincides with some of the work we're doing. You went to the recruitment one and, and how to handle different environments and, and so on and so forth. It's always good like that at MMA, and this year especially, it just rung true to me that everybody kinda found something that was not only interesting to them, but very appropriate to what we're doing right at this very time.
Right.
And, and just gonna add a couple of things, just so people understand the MMA Mass Municipal Association. Uh, this uh, convention, like Carl said, has been uh, by Zoom the past couple of years, and you really don't get that much out of it, to be truthful. But when you're down there with twelve hundred other uh, elected and appointed and uh, people working in government, you can always pick up something, always. I, I don't, I don't care. Uh, even if you don't get anything out of a seminar, you're gonna pick up something at lunch or, or just talking to people. And uh.
Yeah, the breakfast, Russell, remember the breakfast with those small towns?
Right.
All the different issues that the smaller rural communities are facing.
Right.
And we're facing in, in the need to get together and network and produce a legislative, um, you know, type uh, interface with the caucus.
Right, and that was an impromptu thing, and uh, we're gonna be holding a meeting uh, uh, in Holio to, to get the ball going, so, uh, but it's, it's, it's smaller communities in Western Massachusetts, uh, we realized that we have to be in together to have a voice. Uh, and I, I think that's how you do it, you know, you get together and, and go down there as a group and, and get more attention. And while we're talking about that, um, I was lucky enough to get a book donated to the town of Southwick. Uh, this was by a, a gentleman that went and photographed every single town hall or uh, city hall in Commonwealth of Massachusetts, three hundred and fifty-one photographs that he uh, worked to get. And he's donating this, and all the proceeds from the book go to Project Three Fifty-One, which uh, uh, I, I'm a little familiar with it, my daughter was part of that project when she was in high school. Uh, and it's a great organization. And, and I just wanna, the gentleman said here, he was there, he said, let me sign it for you, so he signed for the town of Southwick and signed it, and then he showed me the picture of Consolidated School, which is now our uh, town hall. And then he said, I, I feel bad because the lighting wasn't good when I was there, so I didn't do it justice. But he, and I started to walk away and he said, stop, I gotta tell you the story. He said, I, I went to the Dunkin' Donuts in Southwick, and there was a gentleman ahead of me. And I'm waiting for him to get through, and when I got up to get my coffee, the, the person there said, that gentleman just paid for your coffee. Um, and he told him, he said, sir, you didn't have to do that, and he says, no, I wanted to do it in honor of Sandy Hook. And then I told him the story of the banner out in our foyer that the kids at Powdermill School had done of Sandy Hook and those twenty-six dubs that are on there. Uh, and he was moved by that, and he, he said, now I have another story to tell when, when anybody looks at Southwick, Massachusetts, so. Uh, I'm gonna give this book to, I don't know, maybe we can give it to the Historical Commission or, or, or uh, I'll leave it up to the town clerk to, and to decide what she wants to do, but he, he did a beautiful job, just absolute beautiful job. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to mention under uh, uh, new business is, we were down in Boston. But there was a beautiful ceremony for our Gold Star Mother uh, on Friday. Yeah, or, or actually Saturday, right, when the uh, when Saturday, Saturday, when uh, she went to the cemetery. People lining the streets, the, the flags, uh, I wanna thank the police and fire for what they did and all the other private VFW American Legion, all the private citizens, uh, you know, we got word of it down in Boston, people are sending us the information, so. Uh, that, that's a great tribute, um. She was a wonderful woman, definitely, absolutely wonderful woman. Uh, I don't know how many times uh, you know, going to the different ceremonies, talking to Maria Ellen, it was just a beautiful person. All right, new business, Mister Morgan.
How many Dunkin' Donuts are there in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
I believe a thousand.
It's almost eleven hundred.
Yeah. Yeah, ten eighty, it was, it was actually a trivia question.
No, I think Ben, I think Ben Affleck's been at all of them.
There is a method to my madness, uh. Just an update on the um, it's kind of a little of both, the census has gone out with the survey that we had talked about um, posting, so the, the three D barcode for everybody to scan and do the survey online, please, rather than mail them in, so we don't have to count them by hand um, is out there, and there was uh, I had it written down, two hundred and nine responses as of seven o'clock this evening. Um, but there are eleven hundred Dunkin' Donuts in Massachusetts, and there are five hundred and twenty-four retail establishment establishments either open, granted, or have a provisional license for retail cannabis in the Commonwealth at this time. Um, the only thing I brought, I wanna bring up under new business, um, is I did start work on a process that I'll work with Carl on for, I know it's a ways away, but it's never too early for May appointments for a better application process that we can do online, people can fill it out, it'll go right into a sheet, we'll keep it organized um, and be able to go through that process even smoother than last year.
It was a good process, but tweaking it, yeah, I can.
Can only make some feedback from others about, you know, making it a little easier to apply and, and the communications and everything else, I think we're gonna be able to do it, and frankly, I learned it from doing the survey on the town website for the marijuana thing, we can actually use the same tool for this process.
Okay.
It won't cost the town a penny.
Also.
I got one more.
Okay.
Um, I met with Economic Development last week, I think it was the eighteenth. Um, that board was still meeting exclusively in person. And even though we had provided secretarial and Zoom support for that board, so I went there again to implore the chair and anyone else who was there to, for them to support the secretarial support that's been brought to them to, to do hybrid Zoom. Um, there was actually a discussion while I was there about certain, I was making a couple of points about why they should be doing the hybrid piece. Um, and then there was some discussion regarding a, a newspaper article that appeared and um, I made the point to the chair that, um, and Mister Courier is on tonight. That Mister Courier is about at every single meeting in the town of Southwick, usually via Zoom, so if EDC was looking to get, get additional exposure and have news brought to Mister Courier, boy, if they had their meeting on Zoom, that would just benefit them as well. And lastly, on that same topic, I noticed that um, the assessors are also meeting in person, they were meeting tonight, I tried to get in front of them, but they were in the middle of a very bit of a debate with a. Bit of a debate with a uh prospective homeowner, so I didn't want to get in the middle of that tonight. I will reach out to the chair and discuss that.
Okay.
That.
Jason?
I just want to agree with you. The MMA, especially being the youngest and junior under of the.
Wait a minute.
I used to say that.
Two per.
I had to. I got you both in one shot. Um. It was, it was. It was awesome, you know, being someone who, like I said, is junior, not knowing everything. It is one of my pet peeves. I want to know everything and I don't. But it, I learned an awful lot this weekend. Um, like Mr. Mogan said. Ironically, fortuitously, I mentioned presenting and proposing the aggregation. And it was one of the topics that was on. The the docket. I I attended it. It's going to be something I'm going to bring up here momentarily. Um, because it's kind of old but new. Um. It was great. I spent, I went to the municipal law one with Mr. Steinhardt. Learned that there might be some actual benefits to solar fields coming out with the law changes and. Um, I learned an awful lot and I got to spend some time with these wonderful gentlemen here.
Well, thank you, Jason. All right, new business, because I don't see under old business, so.
Um, I guess the new business would be, as I just stated, I attended the municipal aggregation um. Workshop. Um, I think it's something I'm. Definitely going to want to see. They present uh, one of the companies. Basically presented me. I just emailed it to you gentlemen during the uh meeting, because I wanted to make sure everybody knew that I did that. And uh. The the process is pretty simple. Um, you know, it's going to save. Let me just look at my notes here. So. Marlboro was the first. Town to do it separately. The Cape, Cape, I guess, had done it under a tri-town pact. Um, there's just the, let's see, Auburn since two thousand fifteen has saved their residents and businesses. Six point two million uh Marlboro since two thousand and seven. And to two thousand and twenty-two, twelve point two million. Um, one of the things they talked about is it provides stability. Um, they've only, both of those um communities have only had. One year uh where at any point the rates that they negotiated were higher. But again, it allows that stability. Uh, one of the prime examples Marlboro brought up is they locked in for a three-year contract at nine cents. They're still at nine cents. We're. Local have resources at twenty-three, national grid is at thirty-three. Um, one of the things Auburn also does that I thought was very unique. And a way to fund the program as well as manage it. They call what they have an adder. Out of the savings, they added one tenth of one percent, which allowed them every year. To uh bring in fifty thousand additional dollars to help manage the program as well as be utilized for other green and energy projects. Um, so I'm definitely going to be looking. It's just, we're trying to bring this forward for a town meeting vote. At some point and um. It doesn't lock us into anything, which is nice. It allows us to town meeting vote. I'm going to read just a quick synopsis. We vote on it. Town says yes. They, we find an aggregation consultant. They'll build the plan. It goes to Department of Public Utilities. Um, there'll be several public meetings, public notifications, and. Then it's after it goes through that process, Department of Energy Regulation would deal with it. And then it would go again uh for town approval. So. Anything I think that can save the residents as well as the businesses. And I know we as a town already do a form of aggregation. Down the road, it might even save us money. So. Any money we can save or bring in is used good money.
Absolutely. All right, anything else?
Uh, the last thing I do have as far as old business, I sat down with Sue Bore uh the other day. To talk about the online assessments and what they do or do not show. Um, she presented me with, they're called property cards. So if there's any confusion about a property, someone's concerned about something. The GIS system is not the way to go to get the, all the information. I've reviewed. Most, if not all of these. And uh, it's all there. Everything I was. Confused about. So if anybody has any questions regarding that, um, they can come to me on it and. We can look into it.
Good. All right. And we're moving on to old business. Uh, North Pond, we got a. Meeting set up on that one.
I just need to talk to Mr. McWilliams and get the same, we'll try to get the same group of people.
Okay.
Together that my my plan that we started and all.
Okay. Uh, the sewer system, uh Carl, uh if we could do that, uh try this up uh. Uh, a get together. With Ben, yourself, Randy.
Okay.
And myself, myself. And then once we've done that, we we're we're confident in what we want to say. Um, then we can reach out to the good mayor of Westfield. Uh, I've asked him to uh meet with us, so maybe we can do that uh. After the fourteenth of February.
Okay, I'll get some dates to meet with that working group, sir.
You got it. Um. We were wanting to spend with you where we talked about the uh, we're doing the survey. Uh, marijuana host agreement with Hudson Drive. I haven't heard anything from any of the attorneys. Have you heard anything, Carl?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, and I haven't heard anything more about seventy-four College Highway since we had that informal discussion with those gentlemen.
Right, because our point of view is we we really want to see once they sign um, you know, an agreement for a purchase that. And they were to take over the new ownership. That's what really. You know, uh, allows us to go to the next step of of considering anything.
All right. Next thing, opening on a South Coast Housing Authority had somebody. Uh, call me and say that they had a a friend of theirs put in an application. Have you received anything?
I haven't seen that.
And and I didn't get it on my email, so I'm going to reach back out to uh. That individual and say, look, I I I think they might have sent it to the wrong email because I haven't seen anything. The town hasn't seen anything. So hopefully we have uh somebody stepping forward for that. Um. Speed limits on deer run. We said we would continue to hold that. And we, now that we have a new health director, we can begin uh uh, once he's uh. Kind of.
That's in February, Mr. Chairman. He starts in February first.
Okay, so once he gets his. Kind of footing in the town.
Get his.
Yeah.
Way, get it?
Get his feet wet. We can talk about equal eye testing in Congamun. Be here all week. Okay. Uh, Carl, any old business?
Uh, no, sir.
The smog on old business?
Uh, no, just, I did attend that one seminar on. Uh, from that was put on by the triple C. And once again, the rules are continuing to change. And there was the new acts. That this board is probably going to have to move on a social. Um. A social part of our bylaw. If we bring back, if we bring this back in front of the town. Um, because it's required under the new. Uh, I think I forgot the name of the act, chapter one eighty or something like that of the acts. So we'll have to look at that.
Okay. Um, Jason, old business?
Uh, none. Kind of covered it when I brought up the tax.
Okay. All right, then we are going to be going into executive session, not to reconvene. Uh, motion to go into executive session pursuant to Manchester laws, chapter. C thirty A, section twenty-one, two and three, and chap two fourteen, section one B. Litigation matters and strategy for collective bargaining with police, union, coalition, fire. Library unit, non-union staff and clerk union. UPS EU executive session regarding mass general law chapters C thirty A, section twenty-one, two, three. Chapter two fourteen, section one B and exception two. Move to go into executive session to conduct collective bargaining session with non-union personnel and to not to reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and not to reconvene an open session. Uh, the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on. The bargaining position body and not to reconvene an open session. The chair declare uh. That uh, exception three, a move to go into executive session to discuss strategy of respect to collective bargaining and the chair moves to go into executive session, conduct strategy session. Preparations for negotiation with non-union personnel and to not can reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session to discuss strategy respective litigation and that the chair declare that open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the body and to not to reconvene an open session. Regarding chapter two fourteen, section one B, a person shall have a right against unreasonable substantial or serious interference with their privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right in connection therewith to award damage. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
All right. Good night.